Okay, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to Scottsburg Common Council. Today is June the ninth, two thousand twenty-five, in the year of our Lord. We're calling our meeting to order, and we're going to begin by prayer. So I want to ask you to stand, your people, for what was just said. Before I pray, I want to read to you, I've said this before, that the death angel has come to Scott County. I want to read just a few names here that should one ring a bell with you, that you would pray for their family. And on yesterday's day, yesterday, six eight, Carrie Lee West passed away. June the fifth, Annalee, Annalee Burns passed away. June the fourth, Rick Richardson passed away. June the second, Stanley Allen passed away, employee of Scottsburg. On May the twenty-seventh, Laura Browning passed away. Dennis Prebert passed away on May the thirty-first. Don Help from Austin passed away on May the twenty-eighth. Hesep Peacock from Austin passed away on, on May the thirtieth. David Campbell passed away on May twenty-seventh, from Austin. On the fifth, twenty-fifth of May was Roland Collins. On May the twenty-second was Jim Barley, Coach Jim Barley. May the twenty-first was Sandy Coomer. May the nineteenth was Phil Miller, so, so, uh, children's pastor for the Scottsburg First Christian. May seventeenth, John Lowry. And I ran out of time. So that's why I say the death angel has come through this way. Father, we just come before you thanking you for the day you've given to us. Father, we, we walk the pilgrimage of life, and you have given this to us. Father, we were born years ago with a, a, a race to walk, Father. Your word says, Moses writes, Father, that a man's life of seventy years is due to strength eighty. Some don't make the seventy years, some don't make the eighty, some make to a hundred, Father. That we are all in your hands, and in this, this shell that we call a body, that houses our soul and spirit, is an amazing creation, Father. And we thank you for it. But, Father, the curse is hard, and I pray for these families, and these loved ones, Father, who have lost their loved ones. And it is so hard. So we pray for your presence, we pray for your arm to put around those families who have lost, who have lost their, their loved ones, their families, Father. We bring this before you. Thank you, Father, for America, thank you for the state of Indiana, thank you for Scottsburg, Father, and Scott County, and Austin, Lexington, Leota, and Underwood, and all these entities, and Vienna, Father, that, that are here, that you brought to this area. Praying, Father, for wisdom for this city council, and understanding, and discernment, Father. Give us strength in, in all we do, show us the way forward in all that we do, Father. And we love you, we praise you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. May we see. Well, now go to our public treasurer, Jan Hardy, for the roll call.
Mayor Amy.
Here.
Tim Hall.
Here.
Rick Cosart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Richie Barton.
Here.
Mark Nicholson.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Next our agenda this evening. The agendas are up here if you noticed, so we have the agendas on the wall for you, so you can come right along with us. So we'll look to approve the minutes of May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Rick Cosart makes a motion, is there a second? Mark, two seconds. Any questions, comments? If you're none, I'll give a say aye.
Aye.
Vote unanimous, thank you very much. Next we'll go to our public comment, uh, area of the city of Scottsburg. I'm sorry, the sc- Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council, we ask to come forward and state your name for the record. Each person will have three minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to come forward, state your name? We have a list here for you. Yeah, if you want to come forward, come forward. Is Tina Cosart here?
I am.
Please come forward.
Up here.
Good, rest council here.
Yes, I want to talk about this trash issue. Um, I was told before this even started, the first time it was in the paper, was I could opt out no problem. So when I got my can, I asked, I called into the ci- to city hall and said, hey, I'm opting out. Oh, you can't do that. I said, well, the city council said I could. Well, no, you can't. I said, so the city council was a liar, basically. So then I'm like, okay, somebody will call you back. So then I waited one week, and then someone did call me back, and again told me I could not opt out. And then they told me that you would call me back, to mayor, and now it's been three weeks, and no call, so the mountain that's come to Mohammed. So, um, I mean, I just don't, I'm not using the trash. I haven't had trash picked up at my house in fifteen years. My question is, I don't know why they just can't pick up my can. And in ten years, when I retire, I will buy the can, and then I will start using it again. But I'm not using the can, so ten dollars a month for ten years is a substantial amount of money. But if I've not been using it for ten years, I don't know why, I, I mean, I don't understand why there's no opt-out option. And I was told it was across the board, but it's not across the board, because some people have two cans, some people have a dumpster. So, I mean, not everybody is being charged, I mean, you know what I mean, I don't understand why there's no opt-out option. Anybody?
I want to address that. We were in public comment, are you wanting me to address the place now, or are you wanting to address it?
Well, I mean.
Here, I'll address it, because he, he can give you the legal findings for it. But the, the simple fact is, the city, any city can charge for sanitation rate for garbage pickup as a flat rate for every citizen. What we try to do is put it all together for every citizen in the city. You can opt out of the can, if you want us to come get the can, but you are going to be charged for the ten dollars. Every city does that. Um, Austin charges, I want to say sixteen or seventeen dollars per citizen in Austin. It's seventeen fifty, I believe. That's what they charge every citizen. So what we did was put together a plan where you got rid of the bags, got rid of the stickers, and went across the board, and it's by state statute, though we can do that.
Okay, so what if I just, when I pay my utility bill, I just don't pay that ten dollars? You won't pick up my trash for me?
Then there's, then there's a lawsuit that has been passed and done, is that the city can come back and sue you and we'll win.
Okay.
So that's what I'm just saying, that's what the, that's what he can.
Well, my wish shouldn't be for none of you to be re-elected, so now I'll be, I'm a dog with a bone.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
And Tina, Tina, I did call you, and I can show you the dates and the time I called.
Oh, I'd love to see it. Okay.
Thank you. Next we have, um, Kristy Colson White. Okay. Welcome, Scottsburg City Council.
Come here.
Good morning, good evening.
Hi. I'm, how are you?
Good. She's.
I, uh, well, I just, I need to know, I need some answers. Um, I got in contact with a woman over two years ago, about a lady that lives in the area with seventeen dogs, anywhere from fifteen to twenty, it ranges. And she, she fosters them or whatnot, but she adopts most of them. She's buried five of them in her side, or the last two years, because two of her other dogs have killed them. She burns feces, and they burn it in her yard. Um, she sleeps in her car because her house is not available. And it's been, like I said, over two years, and nobody has done anything. I've, I've been told numerous times that it's went from one of you to another one of you to it's, I don't know, it, it's going to be put in front of the judge, it's going to be put in front of the prosecutor. The woman has already received charges from the city twice for letting her dogs run rampant. Like, I don't, I don't know, my kids are afraid to go outside, because these aren't little chihuahuas, these are big dogs, uh, jolly shepherds and pit bulls. And they, they kill other dogs, like my children don't want to play outside. And nobody's done anything. Like, I, I'm sure that you guys have tried to do one thing here and there, whatnot. But from being across the street from her, there has been no changes whatsoever, aside from there are no longer dogs outside. But those dogs that were outside are now inside housing and waking us up all night, and I have to be at work every day at six a.m., so it's kind of grueling. I need something to be done, and I kind of went over it with it, and I'd really love to know why nothing's been done, but aside from the why it's not, and that, I'd love, I'd love to know if there's a plan to get something done.
Well, I'll address that for you. And, and if I were in your position, I'd be doing the same thing, I want you to know. And you and I have been talking for a couple of years. And what has been hap- what has happened here is that, uh, we have a person who will not surrender the dogs. The state has an ordinance that they have up to three animals, cat and two dogs, dog and two cats, three, three dogs, but this lady does not have that. We recently went to her house with Chief of Police, Animal Control, uh, Code Enforcement, three individuals. And we gave her notice, and we gave her, I think, a week to be able to farm those animals out, and we came back to make sure she would still release them. Animal Control offered to say, we will take, uh, you can have, she said, they had ten at that time, uh, that, uh, we would take seven and put them in cages, feed them, take care of them, until we can have them farmed out or adopted out. She says that she is a, a resource or a center to be able to have, have these dogs, to have them adopted out. And, uh, but the city, Scottsburg, Austin, Scott County, Animal Control, it's not giving any, any, any of that.
Well, you can apply online for animal care facilities, it's not all that difficult really, but it even states in there that you can still have vital organizations.
And that's what it, that's what it's at right now. I have gone to the court twice, and I am going to have to have, uh, the attorney put forth a motion before the judge, and, uh, so he can take the dogs, because she's a total dog employee.
Like, I hate, I do, I love animals, more than people, actually. But, it's, it's summer, like, and it's torn down flowers the other night, like, I am just over this. So just, I always know it, I like knowing something.
You know, you have, I know you've had to put up with this and put up with this and put up with this, but, but help will be done. Help is in the process, and has been in the process. But now that there is more attention to it, and, I mean, we've had, as you know, we've had health, uh, health department out there, we've had the, the, uh, the veterinarian for the entire state of Indiana. We've had, we've had all of these things, and nothing has prevented, because of her tenacity to maintain what she wants to do. And, and the house, I mean, we have pictures of the house that we put up here to show you. I mean, it's, it's, it's terrible.
I know, I can smell it.
The dogs are chew chewing at all. It's just, so anyways, I would, I would have thought that helpful to condemn the house. But again, they, they didn't.
No, they told me I needed to call Port County.
They, they, you know, the, the veterinarian, Indiana veterinarian says, we've got an ammonia test here, and he says, she's right on the border, so that, so it's, bull the border so that it's not lethal. It was that, it was that close, because of all the stench she has in there. So again, we hear you, I hear you, I have not forgotten you.
Okay.
I am trying to get this thing done.
Yes.
And, and I appreciate your fortitude and continue to go forward, and, and this will get done.
Yes. I've got some of the I don't, yes, thinking this is respectful, I'm going to go ahead and go, but thank you so much. I don't want to complain about the trash, I don't want to hate and yell at my students, I just.
Kristy, just one question. Is there a certain time of day that she lets these dogs run?
When she lets them run loose, it is always after people are in the, you know, like, of the evening, any, usually after ten p.m. Uh, but now, that's only of recently. Up until about two months ago, she was doing it throughout the day and often. And this gentleman down here was actually chased down the road, maybe six weeks ago or so. And that, that was awful for him to be chased by one of those dogs. Fortunately, he was able to get it to leave him one, but, um, the two toddlers that live two houses down from her may not be so lucky.
We've had multiple issues where bikes are going on, and, and again, I've had, uh, I've had some ladies running to get shelter. That should not be, perhaps, that's what we're stopping, that's what we've got to stop here, and we're going to stop it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you for coming this evening. Who else do we have on our agenda this evening? There was a third lane here.
We didn't have two starts, so we just got two in one, straight ahead, so they can come up on.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? By once, by twice, by drops, thank you very much. Going down to new business, uh, and a statement of benefits for our solar array or solar park. Josh, are you a jew? Or is that you?
That's me.
That's Jan.
Again, uh, yeah, this is the, um, the standard procedure that they send the form to us, and I did receive both of these statements of benefits in May. And, um, so I'm bringing those in front of you. The first one is Solar Array LLC, uh, that's the solar park, as you know, outside, well, it's in the city limits, but that one, Miranda Lane, so.
They, they can ship it to the state, right?
They annexed, we, yes, that part annexed, a few years back. So, uh, to my knowledge, it is in substantial compliance, and we would just like approval to, for the mayor to sign this, and then we will take it to the auditor's office, and if we reserve an issue, we will, she will let us know, I'm sure. Uh, this did start, they completed this in, uh, ten, seven of two thousand twenty, which, yeah, you have, yeah, you have the paperwork, so I don't have to read it to you. So I would be open for a motion for the.
Do you want to vote at the same time?
If, yeah, if you wish to, because they're both, the Terratech and Solar Array, if you would like to do those. Terratech is our Samtech, as I'm sure you, uh, saw, figured that out, since it's not the Mid America Science Park. Yeah, we'd like to do these as, as one motion for the two of them, that would be great.
Is there a motion to go forward on the statement of benefits for our solar park and Samtech, please?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
If you make some motions, is there a second? Mark, two seconds. Any questions, comments? If you're none of them, give a say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Let me just mention about the solar park, that Scottsburg is a part of IMPA. IMPA is the Indiana Energy Power Association. They have a total of fifty-one. These are all owned by sixty-one cities. And we, they have two coal mines, they have multiple generating plants, they have the, the lines that come here, uh, we have windmills as well. So we want you to know that Scottsburg and Lawrenceburg are the two least expensive cities in the entire state. We actually beat Lawrenceburg now by a few cents, but, but it's the least expensive electricity in the state of Indiana, because we own it. So, and it's in great shape, so, uh, we're there basically every month to do this. Next is our two thousand twenty-five dash R dash six, resolution establishing Maple Run, Scottsburg, uh, Scottsburg Beachwood, Scottsburg Moon Glow Phase One, Scottsburg Moon Glow Phase Two Residential, all, Phase Two Residential Allocation Areas, Allocation Funds for Depositing Property Tax Proceeds. Attributed to the aforementioned allocation areas. Jan mentions.
Okay. Uh, in the past, I've asked you, I can't remember what, but I know we have gotten, uh, resolution passed, so I could create a fund in our, uh, in our, in our budget items. And I, it came to my attention when we were working on the Maple Run project, that I did not set up a fund for the prior, um, three that had been set up, the Beachwood, Moon Glow One, and Moon Glow Two. So at, I just figured at the same time I was doing those, the one that we just got approved, that I would include all of them, because we will be getting our tax distributions for the first, uh, half of the year. And I wish to get it, we did receive some tax dollars last year on those residential tip areas that were developed in twenty-one. So I want to get all that transferred, because that money has to stay in, once we start receiving tax revenue from that, that stays in those funds. That can't be interchanged like we currently do with our Northwest and Southeast. So that is what this, uh, resolution allows to just, um, for my office to set up those funds. Yeah, set up funds under one resolution.
Is there any question that council has read about this, Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash R dash six? If you've got questions, is there a motion to pass Resolution twenty, twenty-five dash R dash six, hold on.
I'll have one, man.
Uh, Richie?
I'll tell you.
And makes a motion, Rick seconds that, any questions, comments? If you're none of them, give a say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is discussion from Council Smallwood to change the meeting time. Kevin, we'll give you the floor.
Yes, I've, uh, talked to several people, and I know that we've put the meetings on, uh, YouTube where people can view that, but, uh, I've talked to several people, and they, they said that I feel for attending meetings when they have an issue, or that I feel for attending meetings to get more knowledge. Uh, maybe ask your question, and I know for instance, the meetings were at six o'clock. Uh, we've got people that, a lot of people, and we've got more people within the community, we're going to have people that, uh, work in the surrounding areas that maybe have a thirty, forty-five minute drive. So I would like to, uh, ask that we would make the meetings back at the six o'clock timeframe to afford that opportunity to people if they want it.
I, I have a problem with that, but we find, I mean, I don't know what we have to do in order to do this, but, or is there any other opinions? Anybody else have an opinion?
What's our go-laid date?
Conflict.
Go-laid date, July one. So on July one, the city of Scottsburg is mandated basically by the state to go live. Certainly it's going to be live on July one.
What's that? Was that a conflict of some sort?
No, I just ask, and I, because I'd like to split the difference and go five-thirty, but I mean, everybody's agreeing that one's six.
I think the only downside to five-thirty is you still put somebody that's, uh, got a thirty, twenty to thirty or more drive, minute drive, they don't really have a safe commute trying to get here without having to rush. If they've got that thirty-minute buffer, that would afford them the opportunity to drive them into the surrounding areas, especially when you're on sixty-five or whatever, you can, you could lose that time pretty quick if you get stuck in traffic.
I would, I'll speak on half of the employees, because I know some of them have to stay like today, or to have them come back. It's, it's kind of hard, because I know Lauren had a prior obligation, that she was needed to be here at five, so, um, it just makes it a little longer for them to be here.
Do you want to take a vote on five, our si- five-thirty and six?
Yeah, that's, where you gonna park?
Well, wouldn't you boot into Science Park?
Science Park should be in the third quarter.
Because I won't be able to make it by five o'clock.
No, it has to be, I mean, it, it, I agree, it's got to be moved for five. I mean, that's mineral, I mean, I agree, that's early. It's good for the city employees that we've got to keep longer to stay, but it's, five's a little early.
And if we do the six o'clock, if you've got somebody that is, you know, we don't have many city employees that do have to attend the meeting, because they do have to adjust their, adjust their time for, for that given day ahead of time. Let them come in an hour later, or, or whatever might be the case. Yeah, I just want people to be able to have a safe commute, and if we give them that opportunity to come and they don't show up, then we give them that opportunity. You know, so we're, you know, we're looking at a lot of, a lot of citizens that we're opening that door for them to come. I mean, I know that myself, I came on most of the evenings for the four years prior to sitting on the council just to educate myself, but, uh, I think that's something we need to afford to our citizens to be able to do.
I'm going after the five-thirty. I, uh, you know, I don't want the city employees out there any harder than they have to. And if you, we really don't have that many people that come in, and I don't know if we're going to take a clock or if that would make a big difference or not.
Well, we won't know unless we do it.
Looking to my, this is.
I would work till five p.m., it'd be kind of tough for me to get up to five-thirty, even though I work around here in town. I don't see a problem with six o'clock.
If you got people work five-thirty, they outwork in, in Clarksville, and I may, they got work for five o'clock, they're not going to be here till five-thirty, or single.
Well, I work that this way, if it's that important to them, they spell what their schedule is.
Well, the boss will let them do that.
Well, I'm not a job, it's true. I'm not the way to do that.
If you work on line in ice, and you go tell your boss that you need to go to the city council meeting, people say, that's fine, but will you go ahead and give you an occurrence on your record for it?
Right. I would work better there.
Well, you wouldn't, that's, I don't have, they don't like those rules.
I know what I work for the city, we have stuff to go to, we made arrangements with our food group attendant, and we can work it out. But apparently, I wouldn't work at a factory and tell me I can't do my right and speak my piece.
Well, I got a thousand people to work here, the computers, the computers triggering that, you automatically get done.
Well, then I'd rather work in a city, and a liquor store, and I'm hired to do that. I like my kid with first-class baggage. If we're going to take a vote, I'm making a motion.
Here, 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 before we make, now, so you got a vote for six?
What's that fine?
Or five-thirty, six, what, what? Here's my thing, is if we don't get people to come in, there's not a change. We can always change it back here every time.
Okay, and we go to six, and then we don't get any people?
And if we don't get, if we don't get a lot of feedback, we don't get a lot of people coming in, then we're our normal people here. If we give the citizens a chance, we can always change it back.
Okay, that's not a, I think.
I mean, that, that's, that's feasible to give them a chance to make it here, and if we don't get any, we don't get it, then we, it doesn't hurt anything, we can make another motion, move back for a vote, or move back to five-thirty, or do whatever. Does that make sense, everybody?
Yes. We have a motion that to pass?
Need a second for the promotion, is that what yours was, ten, six?
Six.
Okay, need a second for six.
I'll second that.
Okay, there we go, we got a second. All in favor? Aye. We'll change and see how good, then we can change it back, if we don't get any, if I don't get feedback, if we don't get people coming in, then we can move back.
What announcements do we have today? I don't hear the, the castle, I want to just go on the list, uh, about three. Congratulations to Scottsburg Baseball by winning the sectional for the first time in how many years, Rick?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine years. And it said Yogi Bear Junior was behind the plate.
Not that old yet. That, I'm just saying, that, that was my senior class, it was long ago.
Again, one of the highlights, Stanley Allen, uh, suddenly just, you know, had a tragedy out watching his son play ball, or grandson play ball, collapsed there at the Lindsey Graham Park. And, uh, James Ritchie was one of the first ones there, was able to shock him a bit a few times, and, uh, but was made at the hospital alive, but didn't pass. Uh, was planning on, because he was a city employee for a long time, planting a tree in, uh, for him, and one of the benches being named as well, down in the, in one of the parks, maybe Beachwood. The last is our sanitation at the, Zach, you want to stand up? Zach is, is taking charge of the entire sanitation, uh, and Zach can, you got questions? He's here to answer your questions. I want you to know, I rode with him on Monday when we first started, a week ago. And, uh, you know, and, you know, we've had, uh, one of our guys about three weeks ago. he had a misfit, and they came down and hit the end of his finger, took the end of his finger off a little bit, and broke the bones in there. About three, two, three months ago, we had, instead of a three-yard measure, it was a two-yard, they came down and hit one of our guys in the head, and it was a cussing, this and there. So with that said, Zach and, he's got two more guys, are all CDLs, so all three will be trained in how to run this, you know, for his only one man's in a protected cabin that is climate controlled. And I want you to know that, that Zach's not there yet, but I rode with the guy during it for six seconds. And, you know, at six seconds, you can pick up twelve hundred cans in a day.
Six seconds?
Six seconds. And...
Pick up twelve hundred cans a day?
That's what the guy in Lexington, Kentucky, that I rode with, I said, what's the, we had twelve hundred and change. I said, and they are nine-three, that's what he told me. And...
You pick up one in six seconds?
Yeah, pick up one in six seconds. No, I pick, it picks up, you know, one tote per day in six seconds. And, you know...
Zach was pretty slick on the end of the day. I watched him come up Main Street. By the third or fourth day, he was getting a nice feel of it.
I, I...
I'm sure that time will cut down quite a bit. I walked him, I walked him on High Street the first day, and he picked up five, six minutes.
I said, you, you played, I said, you played, you know, with the, with the team, and he said, sure did. So he's kind of a natural, but he's doing a fantastic job. What question do you have for Zach? He's here for you to ask any questions about...
Yes, I have a comment. I want to thank Zach for your new position. I know you've been a longtime employee for the city. You've always done a great job, and people in this district too, and if they comment how professional you guys are doing your job, they're really happy to get new trash cans. And I just want to say thank you very much, and your crew for everything you all do. I know it's a nice job, all the garbage, it's something nobody wants to do, but they want to get rid of it. But your team is, is jarring like a fine old machine. And I just want to say, we're impressed. On my side of the camera, I can't speak for anybody else. I had to get up that day when you guys picked my bread and up on Thursday, and it was just fun just watching. I didn't come out, I just wiped out the picture window, and I thought, this is a great thing going on here. So you tell your god, if they ever need anything, please just let me know. And we're very proud of you guys.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You know, Zach and I was looking down the road, and you, all you see is, is, is a gray tote with a black lid, a gray tote with a black lid, a gray tote with a black lid. It just makes it look so much better than bags sitting on the ground that's been tore open, or even if they're just not tore open. It just makes a nice finish to that. Instead of three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty houses, he did a whole, he did this by twelve, at twelve-thirty, he was done. And so it just shows you how much faster we're going to be able to get up on this thing. So, so it's going everything that we had felt it was going to do, it's doing, and more. Zach is just doing a fantastic job of heading out this whole department. And, and now, we're not going to have those type of injuries. You know, we've had guys kind of get up and spring it up the back, or ankle or something of that nature. So it's been, it's been very good. Thank you so very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I have. What else is, cast, Mr. President?
Juror.
Or juror?
We got a juror, juror.
Thank you very much.